I'd like to call to order the May 16th, 2023, meeting of the Marietta City Council. Roll call. Will the city clerk please determine a quorum, please?
Councilmember Warren, here. Councilmember Lavelle.
Here.
Councilmember Holliday.
Here.
Mayor Protem Stone.
Here.
Mayor DeForest.
Here.
Let the record reflect all members are present.
Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments on closed session items?
Seeing none.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, would you please go over the closed session agenda, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The City Council will go into closed session, CS1, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. The City Council will conduct a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.91 to confer with the legal counsel regarding litigation to which the city is a party. The title of such litigation is as follows: Burrell versus City of Newport Beach, case number RIC2002687, Superior Court for the County of Riverside. The City Council will also conduct closed session, CS2, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.92 and D3 because there is a significant exposure to litigation in two cases. The City Council will also meet in CS3, conference with labor negotiations pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 with the city manager, the city attorney, and the city's negotiators regarding labor negotiations with the Marietta Police Officers Association, the Marietta Police Management Association, the Marietta Firefighters Association, and the Marietta Fire Management Association. That concludes closed session items.
Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk. With that, we're going to go into our closed session, and we will reconvene for our regular meeting at 6:00 PM. Good evening, everyone. We are now reconvening the May 16th meeting of the Marietta City Council from our closed session. Madam City Clerk, I understand you have an announcement.
Oh, thank you, Ms...thank you, Madam Mayor.
[laughing]
I forgot about my announcement. I just wanted to note that a notice of a public hearing was published and posted for the sandstone appeal. At this time, the item will not be heard at tonight's meeting.
Thank you so very much. Madam City Attorney, would you please provide a report for our closed session?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The City Council met in closed session on four items. The first item was to confer with legal counsel regarding existing litigation in the matter of Burrell versus City of Marietta. The council was updated, no reportable action. The second and third items were to confer with legal counsel regarding significant exposure to litigation in two cases pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.92 and D3. In both of those items, the City Council was updated, no reportable action. And the final item was to confer with its labor negotiator regarding labor negotiations with four units. In this item, the council was updated, no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam City Attorney. Moving on to roll call. Would our city clerk please do roll call for determination of a quorum?
Councilmember Warren, here. Councilmember Lavelle.
Here.
Councilmember Holliday.
Here.
Mayor Protem Stone.
Here.
Mayor DeForest.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Thank you so much. Moving on to our pledge allegiance and our invocation. I've asked Mayor Protem, Lori Stone, to please lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and then please remain standing for invocation led by Mr. Singh from Fitz Faith.
Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, and welcome.
I'll pray first in Punjabi language, just a couple of words in English, and end up with "Vahiguruji ka khalsa, vahiguruji ki phate," which means "Khalsa belongs to God Almighty God, omnipresent, the Marietta council members are here to take some serious decisions. Vahiguruji, bestow your grace on every member. So whatever decisions they take, they are in the best interest of Marietta city residents. Vahiguruji ka khalsa, vahiguruji ki phate.
Thank you so much. You now may be seated. All right, moving on to presentations. It is our honor as City Council to recognize National Public Works Week, and I'd like to read, whereas National Public Works Week was created in 1960 as a public education campaign to bring awareness of the impact of public works has in community life. And whereas President John F. Kennedy issued a proclamation 3484 acknowledging dedicated efforts of public works professionals in designing, building, operating, and maintaining highway water supply, sewage and refuse, disposal systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential to serve our citizens, and designating a National Public Works Week. And whereas the Marietta community relies on public works in order to sustain our overall public health, quality of life, and general well-being. Whereas, Public Works Department has been an integral part of building the city and respective growth by overseeing and implementing the capital improvement project approved by the City Council. Projects include the multiple Caltrans interchange projects on the I-15 and 215 freeway network, beautification of parks and landscapes, facilities, maintenance programs, street repairs, water quality compliance, and addressing the issues raised by community members. And whereas, these services would not be provided without a dedicated effort of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that I, Mayor Dr. Lisa DeForest, on behalf of the City Council and the Mayor and the City of Marietta, do by recognize, May 21st, 2023 to May 27th, 2023, as National Public Works Week. And I extend appreciation to our Public Works Director, Civil Engineer Bob Molling, and the Marietta Public Works Department for the vital services they perform and their dedication to the City of Marietta. I would invite my colleagues to come up and take a picture. Thank you so much. Sounds like we can just about everything for us.
That's what I think, something like that.
Happy week. So the presentations are always so fun, and I am really excited as well for the next presentation. I would like to say a few words about Marietta residents Ed and Leslie Chanel. So I would like to give them a certificate of recognition this evening, and it was quite funny about how this came about. As we drive around Marietta, we see amazing citizens doing great things, and I happened to pass by this beautiful couple picking up trash on the side of the road. Now, did I see them once? That would be maybe a...just they're doing a great deed for the day, but no, I saw them on so many countless occasions, and trying to pull over to try to get their names, almost getting rear-ended, having a fellow previous council say, "You drive horrible," as I was trying to pull over to get to them. It is my honor to invite Ed and Leslie forward, and I can't say enough about their commitment to our community and beautification of our community. This couple picks up trash on their morning walk while kids are going to school, and I found them via a Facebook post that gave me their name, which got me to their daughter. So what a wonderful thing that was to visit with Erica as well on the phone about her amazing parents. So if I could invite you both up. So giving her beautiful flowers because of all of the things that she picks up that maybe is not so beautiful, and we have a beautiful certificate of recognition for you both. And I just want to say, it is you that keep us connected to community, and thank you so much for what you're doing. And I heard you started it, and he followed suit. So you can have the wonderful plaque, and we would all like to take a picture with you if that's possible. And I also have art from Waste Management here today to also present you with something.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. From Waste Management, we wanted to present you guys with a replica model of a waste truck. [laughing] It doesn't pick up actual trash, so it's not going to help you out there, but we want you to have this because you guys do such a great job making a difference in Marietta.
You need to know something. When I was 19, I spent a whole summer working on a trash truck.
Did you? You can't work on this one either, but it'll be really nice.
Thank you so much. If you'll join the council up here, and would you like to say anything?
Stop littering.
Yeah, stop littering.
One thing we enjoy is...oops, oops, oops, oops. One thing we do enjoy is talking with the students as they walk by, and they don't make fun of us, and they used to kind of...some of them kind of, "Who are these people doing this?" But now, they sometimes greet us and say good morning before we say good morning, and that's wonderful. And we do find less trash than we used to.
Sometimes we hand us trash, too.
That's true. That's true.
Greet us or from Starbucks.
It's those little liquor bottles that we worry about.
This is actually a win-win situation because we walk to keep our parts working.
Well, we want you to keep your parts working, so...yeah, well, thank you so much. And we know that you've been doing this for four years, and I'm sorry that I didn't... Yeah, six years. Okay, so four. So thank you so much for what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Paul. Appreciate it.
All right. Now, moving on to the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Seeing none.
Can I call for a motion in a second to approve the agenda? All those in favor?
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you so very much. Department Commission announcements updates. Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to announce that we are accepting applications to serve on our Measure T Oversight Committee, and those applications are available through the city clerk's office, on the city website. There's also a QR code out in the lobby that you can scan, and we'll be accepting those up until June 9th at 10:00 AM to be considered for this round. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam City Mayor. Madam City Manager. All right, moving on to Governing Board Commission and Committee reports. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, we're going to pull up the slides for Councilmember Warren.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the honor with several of my colleagues to attend the Southern California Association of Governments Annual Regional Conference and General Assembly in Palm Desert on May 4th through the 5th, and I also attended the Riverside County Transportation Commission meeting in Palm Desert the following week because they think it's fun for us to drive out to Palm Desert, I think. I have no reportable action, but I am glad that I attended. I was quite surprised how many people did drive out to Palm Desert that day, so be included. That concludes my report. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Lavelle.
Thank you very much. I attended the Southwest, my very first Southwest Communities Financing Authority Board of Directors meeting, so that's the agency that oversees Animal Friends of the Valleys. It was a great meeting. I got to see the report on the addition of the Spay and Neuter Clinic Building that they have, I think, almost finished, and I was happy to accept the appointment of Vice Chairman for the committee at my very first meeting. So...and then I also attended the, I'll abbreviate, SCAG Conference in Palm Desert. It was at least a nice day to drive out there, and it was great to see a lot of people that I had not seen in a long time and see some fellow colleagues. That's all I have.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Holliday.
I had no meetings between last council meeting and this meeting, so nothing to report.
Thank you so much, sir. Mayor Protem Stone.
I will defer to the next council meeting. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Fantastic. And my report is I did attend the RCHCA meeting, and just to know that the Stevens Kangaroo Rat is doing very well and proliferating. And also, they're having some issues with all the rain that we have had. There is something called Stinknet, which is a yellow flower that is all over the Lake Matthews area and all over the sides of the freeway. They are very, very concerned that that habitat invasive species is taking over, so I will provide some information to our public works so they can help eliminate that throughout our city. So thank you so much, and that's all I have to report on. Any public comments, Madam City Clerk, of non-agendized items?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any person may address the governing bodies on any subject matter pertaining to city business. Normally, no action may be considered or taken by the governing bodies on any matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Rebecca Farnbach.
Welcome, Rebecca.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor, and to the council people and staff.
Hit the button. Oh, Kimberly. Kimberly's got it for you.
You got it?
I'm Brenda Beazer.
Rebecca Farnbach.
Okay, and we are here because I think we are going to do this, right? We're going to set this here. All right. And we can center that. We're just here to announce and invite people to attend a little event that we're having in Temecula at the Historic Vale Headquarters for longtime residents of this area. Have you ever thought about the days of yore and, you know, just how nice it was to sit in your backyard and chat with the people over the fence, or to meet at the park, or go out to a restaurant and see everybody in the restaurant were people you knew? Well, times have changed, and we've met a lot of new people in the valley, too. But what we are trying to do is to get together people who've been here for a long time that we haven't spent much time with, and we can just catch up. So we're going to have it on June 3rd, as you see, at the Historic Vale Ranch Headquarters that's next to Coles in South Temecula. It's free to attend. We're going to have different groups have little displays up, like the old tractor race and so on. So bring back some memories and come join us, if you would, please. What do you say, Brenda? It's going to be a good time.
So we're hoping a lot of people attend because it's not just about Temecula. It's about the Temecula Valley, and we in Marietta, we attended every event in Temecula, so there's a lot of good stuff going on there. Any proceeds of donations that we receive are going to be given to the Temecula Valley Historical Society Scholarship Fund. Last night, Laura Frasso's son Nolan was given $2,000 scholarship from the Historical Society, so we appreciate everyone's support. Come on out, have fun.
Thank you so very much. Do you have any questions for us?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Councilmembers, Mayor, my name is Major Williams. I am a new resident of Marietta, and it's customary for me, when I move into a new community, to dive right in. And so this is kind of like my introduction. Obviously, I've been a little busy over the last couple of years, but being here, I just wanted to share a quick story. One of the main reasons why I'm here is because of my loving wife, and she came out here for a bed bout or, what is it, a breakfast in bed or something like that, right? And she told me about this amazing, this place, and we went through the values and the crime and the school systems, and what really captivated me was the family togetherness and how we're just really family-oriented. So that is a reflection of leadership and having the opportunity to travel the entire state of California. I know that leadership is lacking in a lot of places, and so this is my contribution, just to give you your roses and your flowers, to say thank you for being great representatives of a great pocket that we have here in Riverside County because they're lacking few. In addition to that, I just want to say I am a rock star volunteer, and so I'm a very active parent and also citizen wherever I actually land and plant my feet at, and so look forward to seeing me more active in the community, working with the kids, working with different projects that are available for us parents and just regular everyday citizens to be a part of. And some of the things I care most about is mental health. I have been taking note and watching you guys on the road while I was, you know, on TV and on the Wi-Fi and whatnot, and I know that we spoke briefly about in January about mental health and whatnot and forming a committee for those resources. Coming from LA County and understanding the plight of where it truly is, I want to make sure that you guys continue to know how serious and important it is to provide resources for those outlets, for the young people that are going through a lot of different things, especially after the last couple of years that we've experienced. So thank you guys so much for your time, and I yield. Take care.
Thank you so much. Madam City Clerk, any other public comments?
Seeing none.
Thank you so much. Moving on to the consent calendar for approval of items 1 through 12. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and may be enacted by one motion and vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless specific items are removed from the consent calendar for separate motions. Are there any requests from the City Council to pull a consent calendar item for discussion or abstaining from a vote?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I need to recuse myself from item 4 as I own property within 1,000 feet of that project.
Thank you so much. Madam City Clerk, are there any members of the public requesting to speak on a consent calendar item?
Seeing none.
Thank you. And calling for a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar with noting that Councilmember Holliday is abstaining from item 4.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0, with Councilmember Holliday recusing himself from item number 4.
Thank you so very much. All right. Moving on to discussion. Chief Conrad, this is agreement with Axon for Public Safety Video Surveillance Solutions with related equipment, software, and accessories. Chief Conrad, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I'm here, Anthony Conrad, your police chief. I'm here to discuss item 13 with you, and ultimately, I want to go over the Axon agreement and our body worn camera program with you, and also ask you for your consideration in expanding the program and our agreement with Axon. If we go to the first slide, please. I'll discuss with you in as much detail as I can our body worn cameras, our electronic control devices, also known as tasers, and then the in-car video that I'd like to add to our fleet, our black and white cars. We'll also discuss a little bit of our digital evidence management system. It's called Evidence.com, and then another piece of software that I'd like to add to the program called Axon Standards. Next slide. So just to give you a little bit of background, Council in 2019, about four years ago, approved the police department to go to a body worn camera system. It's a best practice, 21st century policing. In my opinion, all police departments should have body worn cameras. Council in 2019 approved us for a five-year, approximately $1 million contract, and that contract or agreement allowed us to outfit each one of our officers with a body worn camera system and one ECD per officer or one TASER per officer. So Axon controls both body worn camera and tasers. Any contract like this that goes five years around the three or four-year mark, we're going to look at technology and make sure that there's not something that's substantially better that the company offers. So in late '22, actually in November of 2022, we had a pursuit that came to my attention, and it made me realize we really need to have in-car video in all of our black and whites. With that, we started looking very closely at the body worn camera system and our tasers, and we began the renegotiation process. We also happened to be in budget at that time, so I estimated what I thought it would cost us to upgrade the system, and that is in your two-year budget that I know you'll be reviewing June 6th. So with that, a renegotiation took place. That takes us to another five-year contract or agreement that I'd like you to consider, and the price on that is just under $2 million, 1.95 to be exact. Next slide. I'll go over the three pieces of equipment with you so you can see what the upgrades actually are. So right now, we're using a camera that all the officers are wearing that was designed in 2020. We're going to move, we'd like to move to the Body 4 camera, which is the newest offer from TASER Axon. This camera, for just like all of your technology that you have in your homes, you can imagine over the course of the last three years, the camera is much better, the battery life is longer. So right now, my officers are trying to get 12 hours out of their BWC. We work 12-hour shifts, and really, at the 12-hour mark, the BWC is dying. This new camera will take us to 14 hours, and the camera itself and the audio is just technology-wise, much better. This new camera can live stream, so what will happen with that, depending on how we set it up, I can live stream exactly what's happening real-time with the officers in the field into the comm center. We can do that at the lieutenant's desk or the sergeant's desk, and it can come to any cellphone that we'd like. So my command, my captains, my lieutenants can have it on their cellphone and any other sergeants. sergeants. So, livestreaming capability with the new camera. Wireless upload. So, the officers have to go to the station to upload their cameras, and there's a docking system that if you've taken the station tour with me, you've seen that. We want to have wireless upload happening as it occurs. GPS location, this is an officer safety issue, so our PSEC radios do have, the Motorola's have GPS on them. Unfortunately, PSEC hasn't been able to activate that, and we're years out on that. So, and the Marietta Police Department doesn't have all Motorola's. We have about half Harris and half Motorola's. So, right now, my officers, if they get into a foot pursuit, I can't get their location. So, the body worn camera that I'm going to gives us GPS location. It's a web-based application that the dispatchers will have at their desk, and the sergeants can have that as well, and it'll track where the officers are specifically when they're away from their car. And then auto-recording. This is a feature that, at times, the DA with us has talked about, let's say, domestic violence cases. The DA may want always to have an audio and a video recording on all those cases if they want to prosecute. Even though I have a really robust policy that my officers need to activate their body worn camera when they're on those calls, this new camera, I can program it where the camera will actually turn on without them having to do anything if they're going, say, for instance, to a domestic violence call. So, it's quite an upgrade. Next slide. Now, we'll talk about the electronic control device, or the TASER. Currently, we're using the X2 TASER. This was designed in 2019. The TASER 10 is the brand-new product out from TASER Axon. Our current TASER is point-of-aim, point-of-impact, and accurate to 15 feet. The TASER 10 is 45 feet. It also has 10 shots, so right now, our current TASER shoots out two probes, and they both have to make a proper spread on the human body for it to be effective. This will be a single probe with nine additional shots, where you, the officer, can actually find your point-of-aim, point-of-impact to do the spread, and it's also guided, it helps the officer with a laser pointer that's coming out of the front of the weapon system. It's auto-activated, so it will auto-activate our BWC when it comes out of the holster and is turned on. Every officer that's at the scene, all of their BWC will automatically turn on. The training's included in the cartridges. So, in our last contract, there's a lot of curriculum and training that we have to go through every year with the officers. We had to foot the bill for that, and then all of the cartridges that we go through, including the training cartridges, were not included in the last contract. They are included in this one. Next slide. And then, last equipment upgrade that we do not currently have in our system is in-car video. This is known as the Axon Fleet System. This will put two cameras in each one of our black and white patrol cars. I have a fleet of just short of 60 black and white cars right now. One camera will be facing forward, the other one will be in the prisoner area, or what we call the cage area. They can be auto-activated, so we'll program them based on speed. If an officer exceeds a certain speed, if there's lights and siren, if they open the rear doors to the cage area, the camera and the audio automatically turns on. The wireless upload feature that I talked about earlier is on these Axon Fleet cameras. Probably one of the most important features that comes with this is the upgraded router. So, to put a cradle point router in every car is very expensive for the city. We don't have that right now. The cradle point router is what is required by Axon, so it will come with the contract, and that will run everything else in the car. So, we will have a high-speed router that runs our MDP, the mobile data computer, as well as the cameras and anything else that's technology in the vehicle. Cradle points will be added to all 60 on the fleet. And then, it also livestreams, same as the body worn camera. Next slide. So, to close out, just talk a little bit about return on investment. Why would we pay this money over the course of five years? Clearly, use of force is an issue, so over the last two years, '21 and '22, we used our tasers, the electronic control device, 12 times, so about every other month over the last two years. That is a tool that allows us to not go hands-on. So, in 2022, there was not one baton strike at the Marietta Police Department. No officer used it. We had zero baton strikes because my officers go to the TASER. So, now, with the new system, they can get a little farther away from the suspect and not go hands-on. That keeps the officers from being injured, as well as the suspect. Transparency for body worn camera is obvious. Everything that we do, we want it recorded, audio and video, both in the car and on the officer's person, so those are for obvious reasons. Risk management with the city, most of the videos that we pull down, when there's some type of action, litigation, it all comes from our body worn system. Evidence quality, we want to have the best evidence quality that we can possibly have with audio and video when we go to prosecute. The reality is, most of the cases that we're sending to the DA, they will not file the case unless there's audio and video on the scene. And then, officer safety, I talked a little bit about the GPS, that's very important. And then, to just close out, council, you know, wants innovative technology to improve public safety. I feel the exact same way. I think the body worn camera system, in-car video, and our TASER system is, they're game changers for us, so I respectfully ask you to review the agreement and give me permission to move forward with it on June 6th. And with that, I can answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much. Chief, are there any council questions? Councilwoman... Well, let's start with Councilwoman Warren.
Thank you. That's a great presentation, keeping not only our officers safe at all times, but our residents safe, too. I think it's very, very important. How long would it take, if this were to be approved, to implement and get everything changed out? How long to get the new cameras? I mean, what time length are we looking at for an overhaul of changing everything out?
If budget's approved on June 6th, and we move forward with the agreement, we'll start swapping things out July 1, and we'll have by end of July, I think. It'll take a little bit longer to get the fleet uploaded, but the tasers and the body worn camera, I expect not more than a month to get those into all the, onto all the officers.
And you said installation is also included on the cameras inside, for the car, inside each unit?
Yes. This contract agreement covers everything.
So, it's kind of an all-inclusive contract?
It is, yes.
With no surprises. I like that. I know.
For your consideration, too, when we first went to Axon, this was over $3 million. So, we negotiated this down to 1.95, so.
Well, thank you. Great job. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. For questions, we're on Councilmember Holiday.
Thank you, Chief, for the presentation. A couple of questions on the TASER. I just, as you know, finished the Citizens Police Academy, and one of the training events that we had was up at Ben Clark Training Center. And one of the surprising things I discovered was that tasers are extremely ineffective, because the two probes not only have to hit the suspect, but they have to be a certain distance apart. And so, during that training, when they had the live thing, some people, not myself, had used the TASER, and it's like, yep, it wasn't effective. Here's your second darts, on their clothing or somewhere else. Are these new tasers more effective? Do they still need two darts? Did I understand you correctly? You said that they have 10 darts, but you actually shoot them one at a time?
Sure. So, yeah, the technology doesn't change exactly how the electricity goes through the human body and locks up the muscle structure, is exactly the same. It's the delivery of the dart. So, the dart is coming out at a higher speed per second, feet per second, and there's nine darts now, so they're not coming out in pairs. The issue with the X2 is they were coming out in pairs, and we had a cartridge that would shoot two pairs. So, they would come out at the same time with a spread, so if you had some poor aim or something, the target was moving, it's a lot more difficult. Now, there's a green laser that goes out, the first dart that goes out is the primary impact, and then you move down to make the spread on the body with the laser pointer, and you have nine opportunities to get that spread. So, if the first, the second dart misses, then you go to the third dart, the fourth dart, and you have 10 in the TASER 10. So, I will tell you, too, we have had, we believe that the TASER is effective, those 12 deployments were very effective, and we think the TASER 10 will be even more effective, but we've had a lot of success with the TASER.
Have you had an opportunity to try this new version out?
I sent one of my lieutenants to the Axon convention, and he sent me the video. I wasn't there, but I trust his opinion, and he fired the weapon, so he's very pleased.
Does it create a time delay, though, that you have to fire it twice for it to work?
No. It's rapid-fire, so if you, you know, you want to definitely, you know, point-of-aim, point-of-impact, and take some time to make sure that you're hitting the right part of the body, but it's got a green laser that comes out, and it's literally from 45 feet, perfectly accurate where the laser's at.
Nice. I was glad to see that that technology is improving, because it wasn't very effective before. That's the only questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Lavelle.
Thank you, Mayor DeForest. Thank you, Chief Conrad. It's exciting to see new equipment that is inevitably going to help you guys be safer and the city to be safer. You know, I think between the upgraded cameras and features that this new system has in Dominique, we may have opportunity to have the very best episodes of Cops, as it's brought back onto the network. No, the only question I have is the old equipment. Is there like a trade-in agreement that we get credit for? You guys sell to other departments? How does that work?
Yes. You'll notice in the agenda report, we negotiated this back to April 15th. The reason is, is because the corridor for Axon was closing out, and there was an opportunity for us. So, they take all the old equipment back, resupply us with the new equipment, and then anything that goes wrong with the equipment, it's all handled by TASER Axon. So, it really is a one-stop agreement, and yes, all the old equipment will go back to them.
So, that's not a traditional lease agreement. Do they have a lease agreement that keeps you up to date with the current technology, opposed to what we're doing now?
They'll continue to replace the TASER 10 and the Body Four for the entire five years.
Oh, wow.
But that's at the three- or four-year mark, really, you're probably gonna see the police department come back in front of you, depending on where the technology is. As you guys know, the technology in just a couple of years really changes drastically, so it really is around the three- or four-year mark. They want a five-year contract, but we would consider renegotiating at that point, depending on what technology's available. In this case, I really wanted to get the in-car video for the fleet, and that's really what the catalyst was for this, but we didn't realize how good the other pieces of equipment were, so this is very, very good for the police department.
That's very exciting. Again, anything that can save any time or any, you know, safety elements for you guys, I'm in full support of, so thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Madam City Clerk, are there any other public comments regarding this discussion item?
Madam Mayor, there are no public comments.
Okay. Sorry. All right. Moving forward to council member comments and discussion, Mayor Potem Stone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, first of all, there's a couple of things that I love about this. Number one, the evidence quality is very crucial, as you stated, for our DA to prosecute. That's fantastic. Secondly, obviously, our officer safety is at the top. And you and I and our city manager were at an event almost a year ago where there was a major incident that we ran to, and it would have been wonderful to have that in-car video at the time. And so, with that said, I made a promise. My promise was to support any training and any upgraded equipment that you and your department need in order for us to remain one of the safest cities in the nation. So, thank you so much for bringing this forward. Anything that we can do to protect our citizens and our police officers, I'm absolutely, absolutely for this. So, thank you so much for bringing it forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. I just had a couple comments that I love that it's from '15 to '45, keeping our officers safer. The in-car addition to running the in-car unit...
BWC in the car.
BWC. That's right. The BWC in the cars, maybe that being a little faster, so our officers will get better, quicker information, too. That is just a plus. And the GPS, I think, is huge. So, thank you for bringing this back to us. Thanks for negotiating as well. So, can I call for a motion? And a second.
Not sure what's happening, but we're gonna give it a go. There we go. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Chief Conrad. Moving on to fiscal year 2022, 2023, third budget, third quarter budget update and proposal, Javier Carcamo and staff. Thank you so much. We see each other again.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, city council members, city staff, and members of the public. Javier Carcamo, Director of Finance, and with me tonight is our Finance Manager, Jennifer Terry, as well as Giovanni Cabopina, our new financial analyst. The agenda report that we have for you tonight delivers the third quarter budget update for fiscal year 2022 to 2023. The primary objective of this report for you tonight is to benchmark the amended budget to actual financial activities that have occurred from July 1, 2022, through March 31, 2023. This budget update also allow us, staff, to incorporate any revisions to our revenue projections for the remainder of the fiscal year, as well as adjust our expenditure budget for any unanticipated expenses. Therefore, this report includes a budget adjustment for city council considerations. And without getting into much details, overall, the financial activities for the first three quarters align with the projections that we established through the budget adoptions and as well as subsequent budget amendments. Jennifer Terry, our finance manager, will deliver this presentation and share the significant budget updates that we have for you tonight.
Thank you, Javier. So, just an overview of what I'll be going over tonight. The fiscal year 23, 2022, 23, third quarter budget update, where we're at, collection-wise for our revenues and our expenditures, discuss the approval of the proposed budget adjustments, estimated ending fund balances for our five major funds that we report on frequently, and acceptance of a Cal recycle grant that this city received, and future budget actions that we plan to take. So, through March 31, which is the end of our third quarter, we've collected $113 million in revenue, and we've expended $106 million in costs. Our revenue collection is higher than our expenses, and we're at 66% in revenue collection and 68% in expenditures. We are close to 75%, not exactly. Not all of our expenses or revenues are collected on a 1/12 every month. For the proposed adjustments, we're proposing $1 million in revenue increases and $1.3 million in expenditure increases. The difference between the two, $292,000, will come from various funds, unassigned fund balance. These proposed adjustments will take our revenue budget, citywide revenue budget, to $171 million, and our expenditures to $156 million. So, this slide represents our citywide revenue and every category that we have rolled up into that $171 million proposed amended budget. We're highlighting our top three revenue sources, our sales tax, property tax, and other miscellaneous revenue, because those are the most significant changes we have for the proposed adjustments. $1 million is proposing to increase for Measure T sales tax. This is consistent with our receipts to date, which we've collected through April, which reflects February of 2023. And so, we're proposing to increase that, and that increase is consistent with our sales tax consultant and their annual projections as well. Property taxes are decreasing, actually, due to the tax increment that we receive for the successor agency, and that revenue is used to pay... for the successor agency, and that revenue is used to pay our debt service on various loans that the successor agency has. We estimated a higher amount that, during budget adoption two years ago, and we're truing this up to what revenue we're actually receiving. And then the other miscellaneous revenue. I'm sorry, actually, one, one is an increase and one is a decrease, so it, it does offset to, to each other. Again, like I said, 66% received through March, March 31st. We're proposing a million-dollar revenue increase, and this will bring our total revenue amended budget to $171 million. On the expenditure side, we're at 80, 68%, which is fairly in line with, with where we're at in the fiscal year. The personnel costs are increasing by $354,000, and that's made up from several different issues or scenarios. One is a reclass position to a higher level. Two, new positions that were approved at mid-year are coming online sooner than we Funding for a part-time temporary position in development services, and it, a budget that was inadvertently removed as part of mid-year. So that, that encompasses the $354,000. And then we have the operations and maintenance. We have, we're truing up various contract services totaling $254,000. We also have the budget establishment of $163,000 for the Cal recycle grant, and $391,000 for a previously approved developer agreement that the, the terms of the agreement have been satisfied, so we had already paid that out. So that will bring our amended expenditure budget to $156 million. Before I, I leave this slide, though, I did want to point out the capital outlay is 148%, and that is associated primarily with our capital improvement. We, we don't budget the expenditure side for capital improvement projects. It's budgeted in a subsidiary ledger, but when we actually expend the items, they do reflect on the, the general ledger, so that's why you see the 148%. Moving on to unassigned fund balance, so for our five major funds, general fund, Measure T, the Fire District, Community Services District, and the Library, we're looking at a total estimated ending fund balance as of June 30 to be $41.1 million. We have discussed this during the workshop, that we will be assigning a good portion of that unassigned fund balance for general fund and Measure T as part of the budget adoption. So you'll start to see those numbers go down. Fire District is maintaining at a zero unassigned fund balance due to the operating transfers that are provided by Measure T. And the CSD, this is where you'll find the, the budget that was inadvertently deleted, $271,000. And the Library, they are maintaining their, or they're slowly utilizing their unassigned fund balance. So they're using, use of unassigned fund balance is $17,000. At the end of next fiscal year, we're proposing that all of their unassigned fund balance will be depleted and dependent on Measure T, similar to the Fire District and the CSD. So our, our use of unassigned fund balance is $3.7 million. Part of the, I'm sorry, this is contribution to unassigned fund balance, it's a positive number. $463,000 for general fund, 3.5 million for Measure T, and then the three other funds have minor use of unassigned fund balance. And for, for Fire District and CSD, those two funds will be trued up as part of year end. So it's our intent at the, at the close of the fiscal year to either provide additional funding if needed, if they did go over budget, or return any unused operating transfer to, back to Measure T for repurposing for other things. So this is a summary table of our general fund, beginning balance, proposed revenues, proposed expenditures, transfers out, use of reserves, and our estimated ending fund balance. And this is represented for, for all five of those funds. Just to note, the capital outlay, the use of reserves, and the transfers to reserves, those have all been part of previous council actions. Just clicking through everything I've already talked about. The Cal recycle grant was provided by Senate Bill 18, 1383, the Local Assistance Grant Program. Part of the action tonight is to accept the grant on the, for, for the city and appropriate the revenue and expenditure budgets related to this grant. Future actions for, budget-related future actions include fourth quarter and combined with our year-end update. That typically happens in the fall, November, December time, as we wrap up our audit. The biannual budget adoption is June 6th, estimated for, and the first quarter budget update for the next biannual budget will occur October, November-ish. So with these, with this report, we are recommending the following actions. Accept this third quarter budget update. Adjust the fiscal year 22, 23 operating budget as defined in the, this quarterly report and, and listed in the attachments. And accept the Cal Recycle Senate Bill 1383 Local Assistance Grant Program, and establish the corresponding revenue and expenditure budgets. This concludes our presentation, and we're available for any questions you may have.
Thank you so very much. I have a question. I'll start off the questions if there's any from my colleagues as well, we'll move to those. But could you review the capital outlay at 148%? Could you just repeat what you said?
Yes, I'll get back there, just so we have it on the screen. Okay, so we have, the amended budget includes carryovers from prior year for mostly capital improvement projects. We typically have some capital outlay that we do budget for as part of our annual budget, but most of that $4.4 million is carries, carryovers from prior year. When we take that action as part of the year-end, we do a carryover of any unused purchase order that still needs to, to remain open. That budget with that unused purchase order carries into the next fiscal year. So that makes up the 4.4 million. The $6.5 million in the year-to-date column is for any current year capital improvement projects that we've already paid out on. So I know they're doing the Slurry Seal or the, I don't know what other projects.
So the, and just to add what Jennifer went over, the capital outlay, so normally these, these type of budgets that we have there are one-time purchases, so vehicles, equipment, for instance, so those are budgeted in the operating budget. The, at the same time, the capital improvement plan budget, which sits on a different general ledger or subsidiary ledger, those are budgeted separately. However, when we run our reports for all expenses, they also show up on a general ledger. So while the budget is in one subsidiary ledger, the expenses show ups on a, on the, also on the separate general ledger. I hope that answered the question in terms as to why the number seems significant, but I can assure you, the CAP, but the CAP expenses are budgeted on the CAP plan.
Thank you so much. That clarifies it completely, so thank you. Any other, any other questions? Councilmember Lavelle.
Just one clarifying question. Can you go to the grant call-out, the Senate bill, please? I just wanted to know how much this was for? Is it a one-time amount? Is, is there work associated? Is it a shared cost program that the city gets wrapped up in? Like, what, what is that?
So it is a one-time grant that we applied for through Cal Recycle. The amount of the grant is $163,000, and we can use that funding for, hold on one second.
Recycling of some sort.
Fund activities associated with the coordination of disposal of organic waste, a food recovery program from WRCOG, and a consultant to ensure that the city complies with the emerging state mandates related to organic disposal.
So this ties real close into the Waste Management presentation a couple weeks ago, I believe, right?
Yes.
Okay. And, and those increases and that effort that they presented, is, was this known then? Was this?
Was this grant known at that time?
Yes, the, the state money was coming?
Don't believe so. I, I'm looking at, at.
I'm just curious if this was, was a response to the state making that happen?
So, good evening, members of the city council. So yes, this grant was actually a funding source that was set up by the state of California to help cities with implementation of all the new requirements associated with SB 1383. It's different, though, related to the rate-setting process that we went through, which is really directly what are our costs to meet that. But in addition, you might remember, I mentioned there's other program responsibilities that the city has. This money will help us with some of those. So it's going to be really helpful, like Jennifer said, it's $163,000, and we've been planning how we can use it to help us meet some of those other requirements.
And so the, some of the requirements, I assume, would be tracking, monitoring, providing information to the state and what we're doing?
Some of that, yes, and there, there are, there's very extensive new reporting requirements that we have, even like when we're working with different businesses, if they've, if they request a waiver, we have to track that with photos and what the communication was and so forth.
Gotcha.
So that's one piece. Food recovery programs, working with food generating organizations like grocery stores, restaurants, and then helping the food get to nonprofits that give it out to people who are hungry. I talked about that when we described the program, so this money will also help us with implementing something like that.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Seeing no other questions. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments on, regarding this discussion item?
Seeing none.
Thank you. Any comments or discussion? Councilmember Lavelle.
Or Holliday.
Holliday.
See, I threw her off because I had no questions.
I know.
I don't know if you saw, the whole dais looked over here to the right and says, "Do you have any questions?", being the finance guy, and I, and I did not. I just wanted to commend you guys on a great update. You guys are rock stars in the finance world, which is where I live, and I appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Holliday. All right, so I just would like to call for a motion in a second. All right, and all those in favor?
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you so very much, and thank you, Jennifer and Javier, and welcome, Giovanni. I got it right. All right, welcome. It's nice to see you. All right, moving on to Playground Equipment Replacement Project. This is the fun one. Brian Ambrose, Community Service Director.
Let's bring up the pictures.
Yeah, I want to see all the playgrounds.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Before you this evening is an exciting project for the Community Services Department. As you may know, since the Great Recession, CSD has not been able to keep up with the replacement needs of individual tot lots and playground equipment on a consistent basis. For a variety of reasons, our park assets have started to show their age. However, we're, we plan on making a splash this year by replacing playground equipment in seven parks and building new playgrounds in two parks. We will attempt to get onto a replacement schedule for, for the future to ensure our residents have access to great park facilities that include inclusive design features for children with wide-ranging disabilities. In fact, tonight, most of the designs you'll see include wheelchair accessibility and other features for children with physical challenges. With me this evening is Brian Crawford, Senior Program Manager. He has been managing this project, as well as all of CSD's high-profile projects, such as the pool, the library expansion project, and others. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Crawford.
Thank you, Mr. Ambrose. Really appreciate it. Community Services is known as a department of fun, so it's fitting I'm able to present information tonight on our, for our Playground Equipment Replacement Project, that I'm sure will bring a lot of fun and excitement to the residents of Marietta. Our project includes adding playground equipment to two parks that currently have no equipment, and then replacing existing equipment at seven other park locations. This is a fairly large-scale project, and it's being broken into two phases, which I'll explain in just a moment. The city of Marietta has 53 parks, and 30 of those have playground equipment. The parks included in this project were selected based on the age and condition of the playground equipment at those parks, and the availability of funding in different community services districts or landscape and lighting district accounts that are used to maintain those park facilities. There are a lot of moving pieces in this project, but the critical step of configuring the equipment that will be installed at each park has been done over the past year. I want to make sure that we acknowledge that the imagination and creativity that went into the designs you're going to see comes in large part from Leah Colick, the city's Parks and Community Services Manager. She really has a passion for delivering high-quality amenities to our residents. Another crucial step in the project is actually finalizing the purchase of the playground equipment. There is about a six-month lead time on receiving the equipment once we place the order. Also, in order to proceed with site design and engineering, we need to have a detailed specifications for the equipment to provide to our engineering consultants. As I mentioned before, two of our sites currently don't have any playground equipment. Our engineering consultants need to design price, precise grading plans, drainage improvement, ADA access, and other civil improvements. They will also develop construction bid specifications that will be used to bid this, bid the construction portion of the project closer to the end of the year. Once we have the construction bid results, then we will return to the city council to seek approval for construction contracts. As you can see from the map on the slide, the selected parks are located throughout the city. The first four parks on the list are being grouped in one phase, and the last five in another phase. The primary reason for this is because we are using two different playground equipment manufacturers, one for each phase. We also have included the parks that currently don't have any equipment into the first phase because those sites will require more engineering. And the first three parks on the list also share the same funding source. The second-phase parks are all less complex removal and replacements. The construction of each phase will be put out to bid separately. Depending on when the city can expect to receive the playground equipment from each manufacturer, there is the possibility that construction on each phase could take place Game Time Playground Equipment Manufacturer will be, will supply the equipment for the first phase. This is North Star Park, located just north of Villa Miramosa in the far northeast section of Marietta. There is currently no playground equipment at this site. That will change with the addition of Atom Sawyer-themed equipment that will include ADA-accessible features such as wheelchair ramps, inclusive swings, and the city's first zipline ride. You can see that we have incorporated as You can see that we have incorporated as much shading into all the designs you will see tonight. Also, I should mention that in most of the pictures you see, the play surface is depicted as a primary color. The play surface at all the playgrounds you see tonight will be removed and replaced with soft wood chips specifically designed for playgrounds. The current play surfaces of sand and poor-in-place foam material are difficult to maintain and lose their fall cushioning properties over time. Next, we have Monte Vista Park, located south of Villa Miramosa. This location also currently has no playground equipment. Leah dreamed up a really nice spaceship theme that is reminiscent of vintage playground equipment from 50 years ago. It looks really great. There are also inclusive features in this design, as you can see in the bottom right-hand corner, of an accessible merry-go-round. Next is Palomar Park, located just north of La Alba Drive. We will replace the current equipment with inclusive equipment designed to be used by children with different capabilities. The design also has a space theme and looks really great. Rounding out the first phase is Oak Terrace Park in the area of Sweet Spire Terrace. The current footprint of the park includes what you see on the left side of the picture. We are going to add the small section on the right side so that swings can be added to the design. You can see from this picture that the equipment is ADA-accessible and includes inclusive swing chairs. Now, we present the parks that will be included in the second phase of our project. Landscape Structures Incorporated will supply the equipment for these parks. This is Altamira Sports Park, just north of Marietta Hot Springs Road. There is a small playground equipment set that will be replaced with a nice, modern structure that is partially shaded. This is East Gate Park, which is a small neighborhood park right next to Whitewood Road. The new equipment will have plenty of climbing surfaces and shaded play section. This is, next is Rancho Acacia's Park, which is between Avenida Acacia's and Whitewood Road. The current equipment was installed in 1997. The new equipment encourages balance and climbing skills. Next is Sycamore Park, which is on the northern border of the city off Madison Avenue. The new equipment has a pirate theme, and there is a really nice rocking boat that you can see on the far left of the picture. Last, we have Firefighter Park at intersection of Marietta Hot Springs and Whitewood Roads. There is a pair of spray turtles that have not functioned in years. The plan is to remove the spray turtles and replace this with a great firehouse-themed equipment. You can see the Dalmatian there. Looks great. So I realize this is a lot of information, and I really appreciate your patience while I move through the presentation. I can answer any questions you may have or provide any clarifying information.
Thank you so much for bringing fun back to a lot of our city parks, so we greatly appreciate that. Councilmember Holliday.
Great presentation. Thank you, guys. Why the two different vendors?
Both Game Time and LSIR are the two premier park vendors. You'll see most of their equipment throughout our parks currently. Their playground equipment lasts for a very, very long time, as can be seen in the equipment that we have installed in Marietta. A secondary reason, which is very important, is replacement parts. We've had a number of incidents where everything from vandalism to pieces getting broke, both Game Time and LSI can send out those parts pretty much immediately. We have used other vendors in the past, and we just never, you know, had good success with those companies. Both of these companies are also on cooperative purchases, purchasing agreements, so they've already been vetted by large-scale organizations.
And why not all to one vendor? Would you get a better price break if it was all with one vendor, or do you prefer to have them both engaged at all times?
I think we, to a certain extent, played both of the vendors, not against each other by any stretch of the imagination, but we let them know at the beginning there were potential for nine totlots to be either constructed or to be replaced, and to sharpen your pencils. And to the credit of both organizations, I believe they did so.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Holliday. Councilmember Lavelle.
Thank you. Mayor DeForest. The equipment that is being replaced and upgraded, kind of the same question with the older police equipment, are we going to repurpose that, donate it? Where will that be put?
I did reach out to the vendors that are, that's going to supply us with new equipment. They really can't do anything with this equipment. It's really just going to be recycled, disposed of. For safety purposes, you don't really want to repurpose this equipment anywhere else for liability reasons as well.
Okay, fair enough. I just wanted to, if it was usable, then, you know, even dog parks might benefit from some of it, I guess. I don't know. No, this is great. Great updates. This is exciting, and I'm happy to see that Ron will have somebody, somewhere to celebrate his birthday next year.
All right, moving on to Councilwoman Warren.
How do you follow that? Sorry, composure here. I do have one question. Great presentation. I'm very excited about this. These improvements are long overdue, I know. I just wanted you to explain the wood chips, because what I remember, wood chips are not, you follow on them, you get hurt, and could you explain the new technology in the wood chips so we could understand it a little bit better, please?
Right. So currently, the playgrounds, or a lot of playgrounds have either beach sand, and there's, there can be debris in there, they, it doesn't really drain very well. It can be moved onto the adjacent sidewalks, creating a slip-and-fall hazard. It's just not very sanitary, and plus, there, you know, when it, when, when some of it's missing, it just loses its cushioning abilities. Another type of surface that we see common in playgrounds is the poor-in-place foam. So over a period of time, due to sunlight, other environmental degradation, it also losing its cushioning ability. So with wood chips, it's easy to add, and it's also easy to replace in whole and part or in part. So we can remove it, replace it fairly quickly. It's fairly inexpensive. It's a clean technology, and it drains fairly well. It really all depends on what you have underneath there. So we're going to, when we go and do the replacements, we're going to make sure that the drainage is working, that everything is functioning correctly. That's probably the first thing that we want to do as far as drainage, so it'll help the wood chips break falls a lot better.
Okay. And there's this, same type of wood chip, you would go to a home improvement store?
No.
No, it's not. That's what I'm trying to, that's what I wanted to get out of you.
Yeah. It's a, it's a different type of wood chip. It's a cleaner product. It's a more uniform product. It doesn't have a lot of chemicals that you would see in some type of a Home Depot or a Lowe's product, that kind of thing.
I just thought that would be good for the public to hear. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Madam City Clerk, are there any public comments regarding this issue?
Seeing none.
All right. Any other comments? I'll make a comment. Thank you. I see there is no additions or changes in my district, but I do know that I, I will say I have the newest park, so no complaints, but, you know, I'm just sticking up for District Three here, so. But it's nice to see, it's nice to see improvements made on equipment that is bad. And I have been to the turtle park, and it is sad to see those little turtles just not even working. So it'll be nice to replace that with fire truck park. So thank you so much for your time, and you guys are definitely the proprietors of fun in our city, so thank you. Can we move for a motion in a second?
Motion carries unanimously, five-zero.
Thank you so much. Madam City Clerk, moving on to governing board announcements. Before we start our governing board announcement, I received a request from Councilmember Holliday requesting his time to be a bit extended tonight. I think he feels a little bit veracious, so we will grant him his wish of a long-windedness this evening. And I will start out, though, with Councilmember Warren, Madam City Clerk.
At least she didn't say "bippity-poppity boo", your wish come true, okay. Along with my colleagues, on the 10th of May, we all attended the Mondomos Terrace Apartments groundbreaking ceremony. Also, the networking breakfast for the Marietta Chamber was excellent. Talked about a lot of good things that we, as parents and grandparents, need to pass on to our children about putting a trust together, and it was very well-received and excellent, excellent information. And then, along with Councilmember Holliday, we met with Anita Ward on the 12th regarding the CARE Solus program that we talked about regarding mental health and to help our residents get some access to some care. So that concludes my report. If anybody needs me, I'm pretty sure you all have my phone number, but it's on the website, so please don't, don't hesitate to call. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Warren. Councilmember Lavelle.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the privilege of attending and sitting with the local school board in Marietta at Mesa High School this, I think it was last week. They have, if you guys didn't, I'm from rural Texas, and so when I first learned about this CTE program here, it absolutely blew me away. And so what this was, was the award ceremony for multiple different legs of the program. And so this was the Military Science and then the JRTC Programs Award. And the amount of kids that are, you know, almost adults, that walked out of there with awards and were participating in the CTE program was nothing short of amazing. You know, in the, in the fire, in the fire line alone, so many of them already had their EMT license before they're even out of high school. So seeing that happen and seeing them being exposed to the workforce and opportunities and having a career at such a young age, and quite frankly, seeing the motivation that these kids had, it was just amazing. So I was happy to be there, super excited, just for my own daughter to be, have access and exposure to that type of environment. So congrats to the program. Valerie Bacchus, if you don't know her, she's who runs that for our school district here. It's an amazing program. They have all kinds of opportunities, and there's actually adding new legs every year, it seems. So, great program. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Lavelle. Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the extension of time. I appreciate that. For the regular stuff that I've done, there's, there'll be a slide you can read, but as I mentioned earlier, I attended the Citizens Police Academy at the Police Department, and it's sad that I've lived here practically my whole life, long before it was a city, and didn't even know that this academy existed. And once I got on council and found out about it, I said, "Oh, I have to do this." And it was a great experience, and I would encourage all Marietta residents to take the time and go through the academy. The next one, I think, starts in August, Chief. Yeah, sometime about the middle of August, so you need to get signed up and get your, they have to do a background check on you, so that, make sure that we're not getting any criminals attending, to see how our great Police Department works, but to see how they, how they keep Marietta safe. It was very eye-opening. I appreciate it. And I have a little presentation here for you to watch. So again, I would encourage anybody that's thinking about that to sign up for it, and a shout-out to Corporal Matt Mazingo, who won an award for putting this class together 10 years ago, and just received that award at the Law Enforcement Appreciation Committee Dinner Ceremony that we just went to a few weeks ago. Thank you for the extra time.
You are so welcome, and that was so worth it. So thank you for sharing, Councilmember Holliday. Mayor Potem Stone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will defer my governing body announcements to the next City Council meeting, but I also will tell Councilman Holliday that the mayor and I did the Citizens Academy class, and we had so much fun. And the, the virtual thing that happened at Ben Clark Training Center, just to let you know that, I chose not to shoot the perpetrator. I pulled my baton out and I couldn't open it, so. But it was really informative, and I, yes, I encourage everyone to go through that academy class, and it was fantastic. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Oh, thank you. And I will concur with Mayor Potem Stone that I will defer till next time. And moving on, Councilmember requests to add items to future agenda. Now is the time for Councilmembers' requests to add items to future agendas. There will be no discussion on the request. A brief explanation of the request may be given. The merits of the item being requested may not be discussed or debated. Now, are there any requests from my colleagues? Seeing none. All right. I move to our adjournment, but tonight, the Marietta City Council would like to adjourn this meeting in memory of Riverside County Sheriff Deputy Brett Harris. Deputy Harris was assigned to the Hemet Sheriff's Station. On May 12th, Deputy Harris was involved in an on-duty traffic accident while responding to a call for service. He suffered significant injuries resulting in his end of watch on May 13th, 2023. Deputy Harris is survived by his wife, parents, twin sister, and brother. The City of Marietta sends its deepest consolences to the Harris family, and to honor his memory, our police officers are wearing black flag, or black mourning bands, and city facilities will fly our flags at half-staff. With that, we adjourn in his honor Deputy Harris.